Assistance in the teaching of English within schools across Suffolk.
Thank you. We will now, I want you to do that now so the panel have a chance to absorb what you do. What I'll do, I'll let them ask questions of you before the main session. So they close the decks for you. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Sarah Jane.
Thank you Chair. Just to echo councillor Reed's words and also to welcome our partners today who are in this conversation with us, I'm hoping that we'll get much from the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do anybody else want to make a statement or put a position down? Yeah, so did you want to make a statement or say anything before you start?
Right, I think that's working. Okay, thank you. Thank you and good morning everybody and thank you for inviting us here today. I'd just like to reiterate the words of councillor Andrew Reed around the importance of collaboration and in responding to the questions that the committee has asked, I'm sure that you'll see all the way through in our responses that importance of working together particularly with education leaders, school leaders, CEOs of multi-academy trusts and also with our teams within the local authority with parents and carers and getting the voice of children through all of this as well. In the report you'll see that there are some improvements and some positive messages which are testament to the hard work of this partnership but there are also areas for us to focus on where as yet we're not seeing the impact that we want to see and need to see for Suffolk children and we'll be working together with our partners on that to make sure we do bring about that change. So some positive messages and some work still to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Now, I'll invite early questions to Claire Lamb if you have any before we, then we, after that we'll go through the questions one by one and invite questions on each answer in the report with then an open session at the end. So does anybody have any specific questions for Claire Lamb? Sorry, James?
Yes, thank you very much indeed and thank you very much for spending the time with us today. It seems very frustrating I would imagine to everybody and particularly officers because Suffolk County Council has the responsibility to educate and make sure our children are well educated. But more than often than not, we don't always have the authority to be able to influence that direction. Obviously you're a head of a maintained, sorry, a local authority maintains school but I'm asking you this question which I'll ask the academies as well. Do you feel as a local authority maintains school, talking with other heads, that you have, I say not a better understanding because I'm sure you understand it completely, but the ability to be able to work with the authority more closely?
I would say absolutely. I think that although I've spoken about my role as ELE, I think the work that the local authorities have been doing over the past couple of years about working in collaboration with schools, looking at the networks that we have, how we can make sure that we're looking to see where the best practice is and how we share that and I think that the local authority are very effective in doing that. We gain support through our standards and excellent partners who look at the school strengths but also support us where we have areas of development and that's across all of the schools that have a SEP. I think that there is a very clear vision within the priorities for the local authority about looking at the things, you know, the things that are going to work in schools and those things are then followed up. Probably I should say that the training that I've undertaken has also been with the standards and excellent partners. So it really is about clear messaging going to schools about those best bets, what we know is going to work and how we can support that in schools. And I feel very much that, you know, within a collaboration of local authority schools but also working with the Suffolk Education Partnership, that actually we know where to look if we need support and where those best models are and I do think that's brokered very well by the local authority.
Just come back, Jane, and certainly I don't want to have this scrutiny as local authority schools versus academy because you're sitting next to each other and I know your work very collaboratively together. But is there any temptation for your school and your governors to look towards being academyised and if not, why not?
That's a good question.
Sorry, point of order, Chairman. With all due respect to councillor Reed, I'm not sure that that's for this meeting and it's not necessarily an appropriate question for this meeting.
Okay, I think perhaps you, well, it's a difficult one. I would say, you can answer if you wish, but other than that, yeah.
Yes, this is, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, I think that's about an individual school and that is, this meeting is not about individual schools and we have a set of questions here that we're here to answer. Thank you.
Okay, dearly noted. Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I ask a question?
Bella?
I'd just like to, when reading the report, the term publicly funded schools reads in many places as though it could be referring to local authority maintained schools and I know that they're distinct terms but scrutiny focus A is about what your actual responsibilities are in relation to the attainment and it must be a fine balance between being that champion for every child and having a lot less control over what happens in the academies. So if you could talk a little bit about that, that'd be really helpful.
Would you like me to come in on that to start with and then I'll bring my colleagues in as well?
Yeah, sorry, can we, sorry, I'm going to refund this. I think what we're going to do, these were questions to Claire. So what we'll do, we'll move back to the, going through the questions or the answer report questions one by one. So you're slightly off the hook but we go back to question A and if the panel has got any questions on question A, what is the local authority's role and responsibility in relation to educational attainments in schools? Can I invite questions?
Sorry, I'd skip forwards a bit. That question was around point A there.
Pardon?
The question I just asked was related to point A.
Yeah, no, that was the whole panel, not just, that was individual question to Claire before, now it's the whole panel. So can we, no deal with that, thank you.
Yes. Thank you for your question. So the term publicly funded schools refers to all state schools so it includes local authority schools and academies within that definition. What it doesn't include is independent schools. So the paper addresses all the work that's going on in any publicly funded school or able to go on in any publicly funded school in Suffolk which will include all LA maintained schools and all academies. Looking at the response to question A, where you've got the detail about the responsibilities for local authorities, you'll see the timing on some of those is quite historic. So for example, the guidance around the responsibilities of the lead member and the director of children's services is dated 2013. That hasn't been updated since then so those responsibilities remain in place. Often with guidance, it doesn't tell you how to fulfil the guidance, it just says these are the responsibilities and that's why we constantly review and adapt how we're fulfilling these responsibilities to meet the landscape in Suffolk at the moment. Hence the importance of collaborative working because it's all publicly funded schools, all children. One of your other questions was I think about influence or responsibilities and impact. I think the other important thing to note in question A is that the local authority has a number of roles and responsibilities as you can see set out in the answer. Publicly funded schools are autonomous entities and they are run by their leadership teams. So with my colleagues behind me, the head teachers, the CEOs and the governing bodies run those schools. So whether they're local authority schools or whether they're academies, the local, any local authority doesn't have a responsibility to tell schools what to do. That's best done by the people who run their schools who know their communities and their children's needs. So yes, we have a number of roles and responsibilities. They haven't changed for all children. How we meet those responsibilities has changed in the light of where we are now. I just wonder if any of my colleagues would like to come in on that as well, any of my colleagues behind me.
Thank you Chair. Hopefully you can hear me. So as Chair of Suffolk Education Partnership, the reason why we started, which was two and a half years ago, was particularly to try and encourage joint working between local authority, local authority schools and multi-academy trusts. It's not a broken relationship but there were certainly fractures within it. Part of that work was, it started with talking to the local authority because their responsibilities are quite clear, that their responsibilities are to all children and students within the county. We wanted to support that and the majority of people that signed up, CEOs signed up, shared that vision. Our purpose, the Suffolk Education Partnership, is to improve the quality of education for all pupils and students within Suffolk. That means that we collaborate and work together to try and come up with solutions to particular problems and that is for the benefit, as I say, of all children in Suffolk. That's what we stand for. In terms of our engagement, there are a number of, the last calculation was that Suffolk Education Partnership, the signatories to the Suffolk Education Partnership were about 67% of all pupils and students within Suffolk. So although there is no direct responsibility for the local authority for those schools within multi-academy trusts, because obviously multi-academy trusts are directly accountable to the DFE, there is a collaboration and a joint working and understanding of how we can improve those for our children. Does that help with answering that question?
Andrew?
Andrew is saying about the partnership work that's undertaken in the county. I'm very pleased for all of, it's done by the education partnership and for us, it's very important to go and understand how academies are running as well as maintained schools. And without signing blip, every child is a Suffolk child and that's important for us to remember. And we go out on a regular basis with, as councillors, to visit schools and I'm joined by my colleague Debbie Richards who is regularly out visiting as indeed I am. So that's important that we understand what is going on across the whole piece.
I believe Joe Mason has got the next question.
Thank you Chair. For the first time I attend such a meeting, I'd have to declare an interest. I'm freshly retired, having just completed my 33 years. But over those 33 years, I've noticed that the greatest attainment increase that you can get is through raising aspirations, which is, sounds a very lofty goal, raising aspirations. But it's when you begin to look at children's attitudes and changing children's attitudes to why we learn. And section A of point seven is about promoting high standards. So when I read that statement, obviously when you're working with schools, you're wanting to promote high standards. But there were other elements of the excellent Get Suffolk Reading programme promotes high standards. And I suppose my question is, to what extent are there opportunities for supportive programmes that the council can run that would fulfil that category, that would be supported by the schools and generate a culture countywide similar to Get Suffolk Reading that everybody could benefit by? What is the scope for that? Are there any plans? Just inviting comment, thank you.
Yes, thank you councillor Mason. So you're right, aspiration is really important and it's aspiration for everybody who works with children and young people, including teachers, head teachers, local authority colleagues, parents, carers, the children themselves. And it's about knowing what's possible and believing that that's possible. So hence one of the really important aspects of our work through the Suffolk Education Partnership and through our work in children and young people services is sharing those successes and sharing what is being achieved and what is being, what is being done that is making a difference. And that's part of raising aspiration because then if you see it being achieved and you know it's being achieved in Suffolk, you know it's possible for you too. And I think further in the report, one of the things that you will have read about is our weekly communication with schools called Suffolk Headlines where this academic year we've introduced articles which are written by schools and settings about some of the successes and impact they're having, which is also all around raising aspiration. There are a number of projects, strategies, pieces of work that have happened across Suffolk over the last few years, including various approaches to raise attainment. You talked about Get Suffolk Reading, the National Literacy Trust work, the work in the education investment area in Ipswich, the Ipswich Opportunity Area prior to that and all the work of the Suffolk Education Partnership too. I think there is a place for the council in supporting that work and bringing people together. I don't think it's around one thing because beneath any successes or challenges around raising attainment, there will be different factors in different schools and different settings and for different groups of children. So it's making sure that we've got the right approaches that schools can access across the county. But one of the things you will have read further in the report is what we want to do more of is working together as a partnership to say, where are there the opportunities for us to come together around some of those priorities? And I think raising aspiration is one of the principles that would be at the heart of any of those projects and pieces of work. I don't know if any of my colleagues want to come in on that too. Yes, of course.
As part of the work, we are linking with Norfolk colleagues. I'm sure you're aware of the change in DFE support and how that has changed from a general approach using national leaders and local leaders of education to now moving towards the RISE teams. We're working with Norfolk, the RISE, with RISE support to focus particularly on leadership because it does come from leadership. If you can display aspiration in leadership, that will come through. So we do have one joint Norfolk Suffolk primary session happening in July and one for secondaries as well. So just trying to add to the context councillor, if that helps.
Thank you. Actually, is that in response to that statement? Because Joanna Spicer's next on the list. Okay.
Going on from now onwards, will we have some reports back to this committee on RISE and what's going on, you know, in the future? I think it's key because it seems to be a really significant piece of work that we need to know about. Thank you Chair. May I come back on that one councillor? Just for clarification, the RISE teams now is much more focused on very specific schools. They do a, they're split into targeted support which is a very small number of schools. I'm not sure if my colleagues could explain how many schools there are in Suffolk that are part of that RISE targeted approach. The other bit is the universal approach which isn't funded but they will support us doing certain activities to raise attainment etc.
So also just for other initiatives, we've been working with the Education Endowment Foundation, with the Coastal Collective, looking at coastal schools because obviously, you know, Suffolk local authority is a very diverse set of schools. We have had previously a project based on improving outcomes in rural schools and we have just been working collectively with the EEF, looking at working with Lincolnshire, Norfolk, Essex and Suffolk collaboratively to look at how we can improve outcomes and aspirations for children within coastal areas as well.
If I could just add one more aspect to that in response to councillor Bright's question. The DFE RISE programme has three different categories. It's the targeted support for schools that meet the criteria. These are criteria that are set by the DFE RISE team and they're based on Ofsted outcomes. There's also a universal offer for all schools, so targeted, universal and intervention. I'd like to think then what the third one was. Looking at Suffolk, Suffolk have, I think it's five, five schools who are eligible for the targeted offer. That is often based on historic Ofsted outcomes. So some of those schools are due their rein inspection this term and actually talking with the CEOs of those schools, they're very confident that the schools will be securing strong judgements. Some of the colleagues in the room and I were at a DFE round table meeting yesterday afternoon with the whole of the eastern region and one of the things being spoken about there is a plan for the eastern region which is being led by the regional director Jonathan Duff and it's looking at the priorities for the eastern region. What we will want to do in Suffolk, working with the Suffolk Education Partnership, is look at, does that capture all the priorities and the work we want to do in Suffolk and what else do we want to do that is specific to Suffolk as well? Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Spicer?
First of all Chairman, my apologies for being late. Apologies to everybody. I didn't realise the Orwell Bridge impact went back as far as Bramford and that turning. So I misjudged that one and I'm sorry. If the scrutiny question A was just what is the local authority's role and responsibilities in relation to education, full stop, that should be an exam question for every county councillor. It is asked at parish and town councils, what is your job? And it's extremely difficult to answer. And I bet that none of us councillors would get 10 out of 10 in an exam explaining what the relationship is. And that's because the landscape as you've just been all alluding to is complicated. I have seven primary schools in my county council ward, two are expertly run by Andrew Berry and his trust, three are on the way to becoming trusts and I don't know where the other two are at the minute. So any distinction and talk about attainment and the difference between academies and those run entirely by this authority, we can't entirely run away from. I don't think we want to cross-examine it in too much detail. But we do have this very odd relationship which I still find quite uncomfortable and difficult to articulate. I mean, a lot of it's about access, school transport, money, influence, partnership, all the things, sorry, all the things you've been touching on. But I'm just urging that we aren't frightened today to talk about any distinction that there is because we're still quite old fashioned, so sorry, it's always happens. We are known as an LEA. Interesting, none of you use that expression today, LEA, but people still talk about it as an LEA. And I think this question is the heart of what is, what we really want to try and get to grips with this morning. But thank you. But I'm just saying to my colleagues, we can't be frightened not to talk about any differences but with care and not too difficult questions to witnesses.
If I may, if I may come in and thank you very much councillor Spicer because I think that's very important, what you say. And I'm not quite sure whether you were in the room when we started talking about the relationship that we have around supporting every child in Suffolk, whether in an academy or a maintained school. And I think that we were also talking and hearing about the partnership work that we're doing and recognising that there are good things and less good things in every part of the system and we're trying to do the best for everyone. And I don't know if anyone would like to comment on that again or Julia, you might want to talk about the future with respect to how we intend to work together and would be working together.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the observation councillor Spicer too. Yes, you're right, the local, and we are actually referred to as local authorities now, not local education authorities. Yes, yeah. The local authority has a number of roles and responsibilities around education more widely, including ensuring sufficiency of places and many others. And I often keep on my laptop and in my bag a copy of a very helpful document by the Local Government Association which sets out what those responsibilities are. So we've specifically focused on those aspects that relate to attainment and achievement in this paper. I think there are a number of differences and similarities and that's in many different contexts. So we have 330, no, 324 schools in Suffolk and sometimes that changes with new schools opening or sometimes schools merging or whatever. And they're all very different. I was preparing a PowerPoint to present at the Suffolk Secondary Heads Association next week. I was working on it yesterday. And one of the slides has got pictures of all the diff, not all the different schools but some of the different schools. And it really strikes me looking at that, how different some schools are. So for example, Derry's school in Berry is very different to Claire's school in Lawshaw. One's a secondary in the middle of a town, one's a primary in a rural location. Andrew in his trust has a number of different schools. All the schools are different and there are also similarities as well. And what we need to remember is that there are successes and there's learning in all of the schools and there's areas for us to focus on. And how we do that, working with our colleagues in schools, is really important. Thank you.
I believe Sarah Jane, you want to come in on that? Sorry?
Thank you Chair. And just to echo what's been said really, I think there's a, definitely a piece of work that we need to do within the local authority to help members to understand that landscape because it's forever changing. So definitely what I'm taking away from this conversation is we need to do that. I mean, I've got the guidance open in front of me and there are responsibilities that I have as your director, that councillor Bennett has and that councillor Reed have. And we execute all of those very well, I think, in this landscape because we are a partnership. It's very different to how things were previously and I have to make sure in the local authority, we have the conditions to be a successful partnership and that we have the right discussions and we behave in the right way. I'm thinking what you're hopefully seeing here is that as officers of the local authority, we do that and that, you know, is being borne out with our partners as well. But there's definitely, this is an ever-changing landscape and just the conversation about RISE, that's the newest initiative from the DFE. So we're always embracing new initiatives and it's how we keep everybody up to speed with those. But it's collaboration is really key. Suffolk children are Suffolk children. Wherever they go to school, we need to lean in and support and that's absolutely what hopefully you'll hear from the team today. Thank you.
Thank you. Killed them. Sorry, please go ahead.
Councillor Spicer, just to talk about yours, you raise a really interesting point because for a local authority school, the local authority have the power of intervention if it's not working well. For multi-academy trusts, the local authority doesn't have that power. So it rests with the CEO of the multi-academy trust to be responsible to the DFE. But the whole way we are trying to work, and it is voluntary for MATS to be part of Suffolk Education Partnership and other initiatives, by working together, there is that sense of wanting to support each other. There are some multi-academy trusts that may not want to engage and then it becomes... And then it becomes incredibly difficult for you as councillors, even though you are responsible for those children and they are publicly funded, if they are in a MAT that doesn't engage, it's very difficult for you to have any power in terms of what you can do. We are working to try and encourage engagement across the sector because we think that's the right thing to do. But you raise an interesting point councillor.
Yeah, and just if I could, chairman, one sentence. The important thing today we're meant to be talking about is attainment. But what Andrew has just reinforced is where this council, where our different levels of influence are. Thank you.
Can I, can I just add though, that when, by engaging, you get an awful lot. So part of the offer, Claire has already talked about the School Excellence Partners. They are offered on a, I think, slightly reduced amount to academy schools. That is a key way of the local authority working with those schools, sharing best practice. If standards, if they identify standards are below where they, they would expect them to be, they report that back. That, that is a key driver to make sure we are all working to the same standards. And that, that's a really important thing that the local authority offers. It doesn't have to be taken up by MATS, but it offers that to try and support that across the system.
You'll see, chairman, that Andrew and I are used to having quite good conversations, let's say.
Okay. I believe you want to come in on that one, Sarah Jane.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Andrew. And just to, just to go further into that conversation, so Jonathan Duff has been discussed here today, who is the regional director for the DFE. He has a relationship with the Multi-Academy Trust CEOs. He also has a relationship with me and the local authority and with the team. So we are talking to the same people. So hopefully that can offer you some reassurance as well that it's, it's a different relationship, but we're still in those conversations as a partnership and together.
Yeah, councillor Spicer and colleagues, just to add a little bit more to that, we as senior officers in the local authority offer meetings with all the CEOs of multi-academy trusts with schools in Suffolk. And we meet with those between one, three times a year. And standards and attainment progress are always on the agenda there. And it's around sharing what we're doing, sharing what trusts are doing and picking out the best practice in each to share and also asking what we can do to support each other. Just, it's just another, another one of those sort of collaborative approaches that we've, we've always tried to encourage and do.
Okay. Well, thank you. Happy with that? Sorry, another one. Oh, Joe.
Thank you, Chair. Again, reflecting on some of my experiences as a teacher, sometimes like with Chalkface, you can feel overwhelmed by initiatives. What sort of review and awareness is there of the burden that we're placing on our frontline staff, whether in academies or in local authority maintained schools?
Thank you. That's a really key point. And working with schools over quite a period of years and with my school improvement colleagues on the, in the call too, that we're really aware of that. And I think there is a risk that there are so many interventions out there that you can implement intervention after intervention. And actually, if it's not the right intervention at the right time, done the right way, it won't make the difference and it can feel like overload as well. That's why one of the really important aspects of all of our work is, I'll refer to it as the diagnostic stage with school leaders to, if we're talking about attainment, let's say a school has looked at their outcomes and there's an issue at key stage two. You can delve into that and see what subject is it. Let's say it's reading. That doesn't tell you what to do. You then need to look at what is it about reading? Is it about a curriculum area in reading? Is it about curriculum coverage? Which year group is it? Is it all staff? Is it all children? Is it groups of children? So there's a huge diagnostic element that has to go on before you then say, so what is the specific issue we need to address? And what, what's the right intervention for that if it is an intervention? And let's use the EEF with their proven evidence-based practice? Or is there learning from another school who have looked at this area and they've found something that works? So that is a really key part to ensure that, that both teachers and head teachers and school leaders don't experience that overload. But I wonder if Claire would like to come in on that as well because that's a key part of her work too.
So I think really key with that is that that work is undertaken with the school leaders and the Standards and Excellence Partners in order to understand where schools are doing it well and where schools potentially have those programmes that have got those proven outcomes. And I do think that the Standards and Excellence Partners have a crucial role in being able to showcase, highlight and broker support. I do feel that the local authority has been very outward looking and working with organisations such as the Education Endowment Foundation, looking to say we need to have what we call the best bets. And we need to work with schools, as Julie was saying, about careful implementation. So we've got, I think we've had many years of schools seeing there's a difficulty, putting an intervention in place. I would say that the training that we've undertaken together has encouraged school leaders to slow that process down. So we look very much in the explore phase to really understand and be diagnostic about where are those gaps? What are we going to do about it? Before we actually start to think about what we're going to do and put in place. And I think that if we have a sort of a bit of a movement working with the materials and the evidence-informed practices of the EEF, is that we do fewer things, but we do them better. So because I think that it's initiative overload, but I do think that because the training's in place and the support has come from the local authority to embrace the EEF principles, I think what we're seeing with the work I do with school leaders is that there is very much more of a forensic approach to school improvement rather than what could have been previously a bit more scattergun. I think schools are being far more forensic about what the difficulties are, what we can do about them and where do we look for that best practice. But I do think the role of SEPs within that has, has been really fundamental.
Thank you, Chair. Excellent answer, very reassuring. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got two more on my list with questions for this section, which is councillor Reader, followed by Camilla George.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr Chairman, and I completely respect your decision to disallow my last question. And I'm very grateful to councillor Spicer to try and tease out the differences that we have when we have the different types of schools. And Andrew, thank you very much for your answers. I think they were very useful. But I'm come to a specific question then. How many MATS are not in the Education Partnership? Because I think that is crucial to be able to get attainment across the whole of the county. Thank you.
I'll find out for you councillor and come back to you. I've just looked at the numbers, but it's, sometimes it's, it's more difficult than you would think because although some MATS are purely Suffolk-based, some MATS come from other areas and may just have one school in Suffolk, which I may not be aware of. So if I can come back to you with that information.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. And I just think that absolutely highlights the challenges that officers have. Because my question, following my previous question being disallowed, was going to ask what were the different challenges that our officers have. But I think that purely, absolutely highlights the challenges that the organisation of the LEA, the LA, actually has in ensuring attainment across the whole of the county. So I do sympathise with everybody with that.
And that's exactly why we need different range of strategies. So Suffolk Education Partnership has involvement from many CEOs. As Mark referred to, we have links with the CEOs of all multi-academy trusts. And in fact, I had a meeting last week with one of those CEOs whose trust spans Norfolk and Suffolk and they have one school in Suffolk. And really welcome meeting to talk about how things are in their trust, how things are for their one school. So we can't generalise that if there's a trust that's got schools in different authorities, they engage less with us. That's not the case. But we've got a range of strategies that we use to, to work with all.
Thank you. I think you wanted to come in, Sarah Jane, as well.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And we've got currently the Children's Wellbeing in Schools Bill, I hope I've got that in the right order, which again is looking at the relationship between local authorities and academies. And there are some suggested changes in there, such as previously if a school was to find itself not with a favourable Ofsted outcome, immediately a multi-academy trust could be in a conversation with them. That's now opened up to the local authority and multi-academy trusts. So it's a constantly shifting relationship really. But the relationship is really key, that we just keep in those discussions together and flex the way that we work. I think that's really important.
Just to reflect back on how many schools involved with SEPs, we had a meeting where we, we had with the sixth form colleges that were getting involved as well, we thought we covered about 75% of students and learners.
Come, sorry, please go ahead.
I'm going to point that Derry's just made there, that it's a significant number. And I think the 67% that Andrew mentioned, we had representatives of all of those people in one room last summer, representing two-thirds of Suffolk children. But that 25% of children that aren't signed up directly are indirectly linked to all the work. And it is, as you say, absolutely key that we draw them in. So I would say we, we pretty much have 100% coverage in some way or other with, with all of our leaders of schools that educate Suffolk children.
Thank you. We go on to Camilla next, please.
Thank you. So I wanted to ask a bit more about the Suffolk Education Partnership. Statistically in this report, it is the initiative that is hitting the most children in Suffolk. I felt it was still a bit concerning to see 33% of children are not in schools that are part of that, given that only 27% are in this, being affected by the Standards and Excellence Team due to only 27% of schools being LA-maintained and 12% in the Learning Improvement Network, which I'm sure we'll come on to. So that makes me wonder how many children are in schools that aren't being impacted by any of those initiatives. But what I also want to ask is, does the Suffolk Education Partnership have any plans to form a task group directly looking at attainment in terms of quality of education? When I read the, the current, I mean, we've got attendance, safeguarding, send and exclusions. There are an awful lot of children in Suffolk who won't be impacted or affected by any of those four areas. Transitions, working with parents, if you've got supportive parents, transitions have gone smoothly. The only one left is there, that community of support, which would be interesting to hear more about because the quality of education and what those children are, the silent majority, if you like, are experiencing all day, every day in school, is absolutely crucial to raising attainment in the county. And if those children aren't impacted by all of those other areas, there are still a lot of children that maybe aren't getting the quality of education that everyone would like them to. So if you could talk about that perhaps.
Thank you councillor. So in terms of, originally, we, we had a poll of the signatories for SEPs to decide what were the key focuses. The key barriers that were preventing good quality education from happening. Because when we're talking about standards, we're talking about good quality teaching. But it's more than that. There are barriers that prevent children from learning. If a child is not in school or if a child comes into school late, that is a significant barrier. So attendance was one of those areas that was chosen. SEND, I'm sure you won't be surprised, is a national picture, but that is another barrier. And particularly there, we're talking about support for SEND, moving referrals through the system quickly and appropriately and getting the best support in. And the other area was safeguarding in terms of, it's always the key priority in every school. We have to make sure things are there, sorted, discussed, improved. And there, with that one, that was particularly with the feedback that was coming back to schools. So those things were chosen by the members of the steering group because they were key barriers in schools. Not directly linked to performance, but absolutely if you haven't got those things there, performance is affected. Moving forward, you've talked about the new task groups that are coming on board. I will hand over to certain people to talk about these. But in terms of the transition, transition is a very important time. I mean, you will be aware of statistics which in the past have been used to show that year seven and year eight in high schools have not built on the knowledge that children had at year six. Now, I think we're in a completely different area to that, but that shows that transition is really important. Making sure that there is good communication and links between one establishment to another, feeder school to the school it's feeding into, is absolutely important. So transition is there. And if I just pass over to Claire or Mark on that one? Mark?
Yeah, yeah, I guess just to, that's one of the new task groups, but it came out about the same principle that, trying to respond to your question directly about the quality of education and outcomes, that's what SEPs all about. And but rather than actually saying, right, let's look at this particular aspect like maths in key stage three or something, because of the diverse nature of the system, it's looking at what can we achieve together that we can't do on our own? And what can we actually do with that, that collaboration? So those, all those elements that Andrew's described, transitions being one of the additional ones, are intended to improve outcomes by ensuring more children are in school. Because as Andrew said, if they're not there, it doesn't matter how great the quality of teaching is. So that, that's the approach. I think, I think that's what you're asking and we've been asked that before, is why is it not about outcomes when it is? But it's all the things that come around the school to improve those things.
And if I could just come back, because that was transition, but you've referred to some of the other new task groups. The parent communication one is, is quite a key one. Because that is, it's, it's trying to get parental engagement from the wider sector. We have very good relationships with parents in schools. We have to, you know, particularly primary schools, you're there at the gate every day and you see all the parents. But there are always those parents who find it difficult to communicate, don't want to communicate. And we've got to try and do something to make that more accessible. So that's why the task group is set up there. The last one you refer to is the community of support. That's just a notional name at the moment, but that includes the work of the RISE teams. And you'll be aware that the RISE teams are focused on particular performance areas. And that is, that is one that may have a direct impact. Whether it focuses on one specific area of performance, I don't know because the task group isn't up and running as it is yet. But absolutely, that is focused on areas of performance directly, I would say, more than the other ones which are dealing with the barriers that those issues mean for schools. Does that help councillor?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, Claire, I'm aware that you've got to go. So thank you for the contribution.
Chair, if I could just add to the previous response as well. In looking at the paper, you'll see there are lots of different strategies that are in place. And underpinning all of that is the importance of any school leader in any sort of school, being able to access learning from other schools, know what's worked in other schools and have the right support as they lead their schools forward. So you talked about the percentage of children that are covered in each of those things. It's about having a range of strategies out there that involves as many school leaders as possible. And if a school leader is not fully engaged in any one of those things, having a conversation with them, whether it's through their CEO of their MAT or whether it's, if it's a local authority maintained school, through the work of the school improvement team, to say, have you done that diagnosis about what's working well and areas to focus on in your school? And have you got the support you need to improve it? So all of those different strategies are underpinned by that. And it might So all of those different strategies are underpinned by that, and it might well be that there's a school that's not engaged in those things that's actually achieving really well, because it knows what it needs to do to improve itself. It's about having those things out there for schools to access.
Thank you. I believe Penny Oplon has got the next question.
A fourteen. Can I just mention the dreaded question of money? I mean Suffolk has notoriously been poorly funded by whatever government we've had, and I know whoever the portfolio holders have been, they have done their level best to try and persuade governments, but I'm more interested really underneath that is how obviously with the local authority school, the authority would have some degree of oversight, but with a academy, at what point does the local authority have any input into the management or the financial management of those schools? Because, I mean, it may well be that there may be some different nuances about each of those schools and how they would be managing their budgets, all of which implies the levels of attainment or not.
Andrew?
Thank you very much, and thank you for your question, and I'm very pleased that you've brought up the matter of money, and I'm never shy to mention it, and I only wrote to the Secretary of State for Education, Bridget Philipsen, the week before last, again, to highlight the disparity, the iniquitous arrangements where Suffolk is a hundred and fourteenth out of a hundred and fifty-one council local authorities when it comes to funding, per pupil funding. So I'd like that to be recorded again, because it is not fair. Just, I will answer from my perspective, our perspective from the local authority, we don't have any sway over how multi-academy trusts, and Andrew may wish to come in on this, what their arrangements are financially, that's entirely up to the chief executive of the trust, but Andrew, you may want to comment on that.
Well, I can certainly support your statement, Andrew, that it is up to the MAT to secure financial viability for the schools, and we have to submit data to the DFE budget forecast returns which demonstrate that our schools and trust are viable for the next three years. So I don't know if that helps councillor, but...
Yes, but, I mean, I think, almost going back to what Joanna said about how the members of the public now would find a degree of confusion about, oh well Suffolk County Council, you know, why have they not given that school X pounds for their sent children, whatever? So, you know, I think we need a degree of clarity, because obviously if you are an academy trust, and as you've said yourself, there is a degree of, if you like, making a profit, so consequently, oh, okay, fine.
There is certainly no profit made in any schools that I would work with.
So are none? Have had to change their, if you like, their directorship, so there must be a degree of that somewhere along the line.
Yeah, if I could come back on that one councillor. In terms of, I think you're referring to some historic judgements about financial probity in multi-academy trusts, they are historic, I can assure members that we are audited to our back teeth, so the chances of that happening are not there, and in actual fact, when you have a look at the historic data, you'll see there were just as much problems with financial control in local authority schools. So I can assure you that we are doing everything that we need to do, and we are checked up on by having external audits which are very, very thorough.
Yeah, so I think we'll close this one down. Sorry, I'm very concerned, we're sort of going slightly off-piste here, with no disrespect to my colleagues, we've got nine questions to answer, and I think we're still on question one.
Yeah, I was thinking that, and then question one seems to be ranging over the whole gamut of questions anyway, so I think we'll stick, if we may, to the order that I don't, do you want me to put you on the end, James? We'll stick to the order we've got now, which is Peter, by please.
So I thought we were here to talk about attainment. Are we talking about attainment?
Ignore the fact that, you know, if the council got no money to support its schools, then, you know, money must be part of the level, which is why you've lobbed...
Okay, well, Chair, may I suggest that when we have painstaking briefings before these meetings take place, and we consider what questions should be asked of us, that we consider the questions in the round, and I'm not quite sure why, if that was a concern of the committee, it wasn't one of the questions.
Can we go on to, we'll go on to Peter's question now, and then we'll go to Ash, and then we'll go back to James. We're still on question A, which worries me because of the time we're going to be here at midnight. To Peter, can you ask?
My apologies, because I've been jumping about alphabetically because answers have come back. Can I just briefly say, Andrew, you know, thank you for trying with the Minister, with the Secretary of State last year, and the fact you've had to write again, I find that disappointing that our funding is not being looked at closely, but my thing is a bit later on, so whether I can put it in now, whether we can take random questions or stick to the proper order, I've never been good at following orders, it's one I went in the army.
So again, we have some very, very important officers here, and also representatives of schools who have made a very particular effort to come to this meeting to talk about attainment, and we are not talking about attainment or answering the questions that the committee has come up with in terms of its own, its own remit.
So in this case, if everybody...
I've got nothing on A at the moment, so...
Okay, shall we go on to question B? Sorry, we got Ash, that's fine, okay, we go on to question B quickly, because we're leaving questions, we're not sticking to the question, as originally we're spreading around all over the place, so has anybody got anything on question B? Joe?
Chair, I don't know if it's any resistance, I actually think we've covered more questions than actually question A, and I'm happy for us to move on straight to attainment, if the committee is, the question, where we start looking at question F, because I genuinely think we've covered probably most of the points, A to E.
I'd agree, we've covered most of it up to the data. Camilla, you had to say something?
Mine is just a quick one that relates to the earlier point, the Suffolk Learning Improvement Network is sitting about twelve per cent of schools involved, is that still something that's being actively driven forward to try and grow it?
Thank you for the question, and I'll bring my colleague Emma Lafflin in in a minute, whose team are working on that. Just to share some of the history, the Suffolk Learning Improvement work, as it says in the report, was developed with head teacher associations over time, and it is an opt-in model, but there were some key changes in this academic year which led to it being a local authority managed model, still head teacher driven, and so I think that change has led to some of the numbers changing, some schools chose at that point it wasn't something they wanted to be part of, and some schools chose, actually now I do want to be part of it, in a way that I haven't been before, but keeping it on the agenda and raising the profile of it is very much a priority, but I'll bring Emma in as well.
Yeah, thank you, and so it's part of that toolkit for schools, so wherever they are on their journey of school improvement, if it's the right time, as Julia's alluded to, for them to join in and be part of the SLIN network, that's absolutely the right thing for that school to do, and we would go with the leader's judgement on that, whether that's the right move for them to make, but you can read some of the impact it's had and some of the positive feedback that that has offered to schools and school leaders.
Thank you. I believe Ryan, do you like? No? Okay, James?
Yes, so if we, before we go on to F, as my colleagues have suggested, on question B and C, so that do move you on a bit further, and talking about attendance as we have already, and how vitally important we could have children into school, and I know schools work very, very hard at doing that, so then under C, just so that people know that we are going through the questions, on paragraph thirty-seven, it talks about communication through Suffolk headlines, which I think is an extremely useful tool for schools, I suggest. In there, I read a few weeks ago about a DFE initiative of, about trying to ensure that children attend school, and the reasons why they didn't. One of the reasons that was given up is because they had dirty uniform, and it was intimating, and this may be something for Hayley to comment on, is that local authorities and school, sorry, schools, Roback, schools, should be looking at doing even more to be social workers to ensure that those children came in. Could I ask whether schools, two head teachers here, see that there is sufficient support from the local authority through social care to ensure that those children can get into school? And I may just add on that, just as a little ray of hope, I think within primary schools that must be working much better, or is working, because the attainment is increasing, but in secondary schools, obviously it's not.
In terms of the issue of uniform, you hit on something that's big in secondary schools and can provide a barrier, there's a huge amount of work that happens in secondary schools to support learners, so for example, in our school we have second-hand pre-loved uniform available for all students, so any child who is struggling with uniform would be equipped and given uniform, and they're either even, we hand out shoes, any child arriving without shoes, we can then give them shoes, and there's lots of innovative work happening in secondary sector around that, and there is government guidance on uniform and what we need to do to support that. In terms of the wider issue around supporting vulnerable families, I think it's probably fair to say that the level of need we're seeing in secondary schools is far higher than we've ever seen before, I think it's complex and multifaceted in lots of reasons why we're seeing that very, very high level of need, but I think it's fair to say that secondary colleagues are, you know, working with a wide range of agencies to support young people, but it's complex. And I'd say, going back to an earlier question, in terms of teachers, I'd say it's the supporting teachers dealing with the vulnerable students walking, coming through the door, that is probably the biggest anxiety and challenge for teachers, rather than initiative overdrive, it's actually the level of support that the profession has in dealing with some really complex issues walking through the door.
Sarah Jane, you wanted to come in on that?
Yeah, thank you Chair very much, and thank you Andrew, and just to, just to go on from that, as a local authority, we are rearranging, changing our shape if you like, to make sure that we're very locality based and we're wrapping around our schools, because we know that, you know, just as Andrew's just said much more eloquently than I could, the concern from SENCOs and from designated school leaders around safeguarding, and the example used about uniform is not safeguarding, but there needs to be an early help strategy in there if actually the great work that schools aren't doing, are doing is not making a difference. So that's where we need to work together, and we need to have that real clarity as to exactly who the people are around the school who can help, and that's very much the work that Hayley is leading on, and we're piloting that out in Lowestoft as of September, October time, so it'll be good to hear from our schools as well how that's working.
Could I just come back, thank you very much indeed to hear that, because I think that's exactly what has been needed and is being addressed, so thank you.
The issue in terms of attendance that we tend to face is with persistent absentees, and predominantly that seems to be connected with mental health of either parents and/or children, so that's where we're putting a lot of focus, and we're trying to work with other agencies to support that, but in terms of the persistent absence, that's, in my experience, that tends to be related to those factors.
Thank you. I think what we do is, as suggested, we, any more questions on B to E? Yes, Catherine Spicer?
Yeah, my question is really about B and C and D, which is all, all of which is very interesting, and we've touched on throughout the morning, but we're moving on to the attainment data, which is in this report. My question is, do all schools get to see each other's detailed attainment data? I know GCSE, for example, is headlined into newspapers, but particularly key stage two data, do schools get to know what they're, all the other schools are achieving? Please.
Thank you, that's a really good question. Well, so I'm going to answer it in two different ways, there is a wealth of publicly published data about individual schools, published by the Department for Education, and on get information, get information about my school, thank you, about schools, compare schools, thank you, everybody's contributing to this answer. We are able, all schools and any member of the public are able to look at information about schools, and that includes benchmarking information in terms of budgets, in terms of staffing, it includes performance data, attendance data, there's a range of information. I think the important thing for us in Suffolk is how are we collectively using it, that's the key.
I'm going to be a bit tougher if I may, so when you Julia, or any of your officers are going into a school, are you ready to confront them where perhaps their attainment levels are not as good as their neighbours or similar schools or whatever?
I wouldn't use the word confront, we have, we have, we and the CEO of any multi-academy trust have all the information that we need to be able to ask questions, it doesn't tell us what needs to happen in an individual school, because the quality of education is impacted by a lot of things, the data will tell you some things and will raise questions, it's then working with the teachers and the head teachers to say, what's the quality of education like, what's working well, where are there some areas that we could focus on together?
Councillor V?
Thank you, thank you very much, and just to say that when I go out and visit schools with the team, and we have our, we have a briefing, comparing and contrasting levels of attainment is foursquare part of that briefing for me, and is always discussed as part and parcel of those meetings, so that's something that we do as a matter of course.
If I could just add another example, that whole range of wealth of information that's available, in a conversation with a head teacher a couple of weeks ago, they were talking about the profile of their school, the percentage of children who were eligible for pupil premium, the percentage of children with special educational needs, and they were talking about their attainment, and they said, I'd really like to know where there's another school in Suffolk with a similar profile and outcomes which are higher, because I'd really like to find out what's happening. Well, anybody can access that on get information about my school, but we're able to access that efficiently and quickly to say, here's the profile of your school, here's the profile of some other schools, and here's their attainment, over to you to go and find out more about them.
And would you do that for a... And would you do that for an academy school?
Any.
Just as much as?
For any such a child, yes.
An LA school?
Councillor, Councillor Spicer, just to explain how that works, Mark's talked about the discussions that the local authority have with CEOs. There are also lead school excellence partners who have discussions with CEOs, and that is part of the discussion. We discuss performance as part of that regular discussion. So it is, it is front and centre in what we are doing.
Thank you. I believe we have Joe Mason would like to ask a question?
Thank you, Chair. Touching upon that subject just a little bit, I think over the years, I've, I've seen high-attaining schools that I wouldn't send my children to and low-attending schools that I would send my children to. And that's based on value-added, in terms of the value that schools can contribute to children that, when they join, to what they achieve when they leave. And I think a word of caution to all members is when we look at statistics, it's a average across the whole county, there's areas of deprivation, social and economic deprivation that impact upon individual schools. And I, and I think when we look at schools seemingly underperform against national standards, they may actually be doing an outstanding job. And it's, it's a very nuanced job that our officers have in terms of trying to understand the different challenges each of the communities face. With that, with that in mind, that notion of value-added, I'm not quite sure whether it's still used as common parlance in education, because we moved a little bit away from that. But it's good to hear that you're talking about other schools with similar profiles. Are you able to sort, give any information for the committee about that notion of schools in different situations? So, for example, in Ipswich, much higher levels of deprivation impacting upon achievement and which can bring the averages down. Am I being a little bit vavour? Can you give any more information on that?
Yes, of course, thank you. So one of the privileges of working in Suffolk is that huge range and similarities between schools, but the differences between schools. And that's why we use the data and the evidence and the information that we have to make links between schools where asked, that have very similar, serve similar communities and have similar intakes. Previously, one of the measures in education was contextual value-added measure. That actually was finished, how many years ago? Quite a few years ago. At least five or six years ago. So we still have, I don't, I don't think it's called the value-added measure now, but we have progress. So we have the progress measures, key stage one to two, although due to COVID, we don't have those at the moment. And then we have progress eight, which is progress key stage two to key stage four. I think at the start of your, your point, you raised an important question about that range of evidence as well. We've focused this morning on attainment, which is one qualitative measure, quantitative measure, in many other measures. So if we're thinking about, do all Suffolk children benefit from a high-quality inclusive education, we would be looking at a real range of measures and getting the feedback from children, parents, school settings as part of that. You asked also about that, that range of information in terms of schools. So we would look at it on an individual school basis, and that, in fact, is the task that we did a couple of weeks ago that I was just describing, because it might be that there's a school in a town that has a different makeup to another school which is a mile down the road. So it's important that we look at individual schools' data to be able to match where schools ask us to, and that's the task that we do. I don't know if any of my colleagues want to come in and add to that?
I can do, yes. The, the published information gives a certain amount of context, but we, we can map in a lot more, like the ADACI index, which is the deprivation index, we can look at the percentages of send, of all those different kind of characteristics that make up a school and make them all so different, and then enable those, those links to be made. So that's just, that's just another, another facet. And the value added is really important, the progress measure is really important, and it is, it is a real shame we don't have that progress from key stage one to two. That might come up when we get on to section G.
Thank you. Penny, open?
I'd like to go to question D. Am I allowed to move to question D? Thank you. My question is obviously about, obviously, the teachers, the head teachers, the, the school leaders. So I'm interested to know what development that Suffolk County Council is doing to actually support our teachers and school leaders, and to encourage them, you know, to proceed within their careers.
Thank you for your question, Councillor, and I think this will be a collaborative response as well. So you're right, the role of head teachers and school leaders and teachers is vitally important. And in fact, some global research by McKinsey many years ago found that the most important factor in the child's success in their education was the quality of teaching. And many teachers in Suffolk benefit from the support of very strong head teachers who support their professional development and provide training based on their needs and their school's needs. So there are a number of different ways that we do it. In the, there's a bit of feedback, isn't there? Is it better if I say it like this? In the response to question D, one of the things we've referred to is the school improvement continuous conversation. That is also part of professional development for school leaders, around that ability to know how well your school is, is achieving, how far towards achieving its vision it is, what are the things that are working well, what are the things to develop. We also, through the team that Emma leads, and I'll bring Emma in in a minute, have been working with school leaders on piloting leadership development programmes to support growing leaders and that future generation of leaders coming through. Claire, in her work, a lot of her work is around providing that professional development for teachers and school leaders as well. And then within individual schools, head teachers will be looking at the needs in terms of their teachers, whether it's individual teachers or whether it's a need as a school. And also in multi-academy trusts, CEOs will be doing that as well. So there's a whole range of things going on. Emma, do you want to come in more on that too?
Yeah, thank you. So for LA-maintained schools, we've offered a, a leadership programme this year, which has been called Grown Leaders, where we've got aspiring head teachers who have come and worked alongside experienced head teachers out of school to work on certain projects, certain areas that they've identified that they'd like to develop as a leader, spent some time in each other's schools, and we've had some really positive feedback this year on that. And that's a programme that we plan to, to carry forward next year as well. Alongside what Julia's talked about, we have interim leadership opportunities in our LA-maintained schools as well. So there's chance for aspiring leaders or deputy heads to go and be interim head teachers, or work alongside head teachers, offering some leadership support as a different opportunity.
So just referencing 44, what that looks like in my school. The first item, I'm a part of a Head Teacher Network meeting involving other secondary maintained head teachers, and also attend conferences for all LA head teachers. In terms of bite-sized professional development, they happen early in the morning, so you can get some training done before the, the kids arrive, so that's, that's very efficient in terms of, in terms of the time. In terms of grown leaders, I've got one of my deputies on that programme. And then in terms of LA-funded professional development, you know, the work that Claire's done has had high impact in the, in the, in the, the community, and we're actually using a lot of her work when we do our own internal training within the school. We've also shared some of the best practice in terms of use, evidence-based walkthroughs in Tom, the work on Tom Sherrinden. That was a piece of work that local authority put together, get head teachers. But also there's other kind of bespoke things that are brokered. I've had coaching provided by the LA. And other, we, consultants have been brought into our school to help sharpen things up. So that's just how it, how 44 works in my school.
Thank you. What we'll do now, we'll open up questions, F onwards to questions, if we may. James?
Chair, I don't think I was first, but I will go. Fine, excellent. I'll remember, I'll remember that in the future and put it up. Thank you very much indeed. Obviously, with that data there, it's showing that the key stage one early years and key stage two has increased over a period of time, which is really good to hear and to see. And then when we get to key stage four, we have some more difficulties. Do you think there is therefore a, it would be very useful to have some sort of, I don't know, I don't want to use the word exam, but some assessment in key stage three, so that you actually can catch it before key stage four is finished?
There is currently, obviously, a national curriculum review that's happening, so that may come forward with that as a proposal or not. The danger of having a high stakes, high accountability, key stage three assessment is then there's a lot of teaching to the test that happens across year nine. That's the danger, but I would say let's watch this space with the curriculum review and see what is recommended.
Thank you. But as head teachers, would you see that as something that would be useful?
I can only talk from the primary sector, and I don't, we don't go to key stage three. So apologies, Councillor, I don't think my, my response would be particularly useful in that.
If I could just add to that, we were actually talking before we came in this morning about the fact that at key stage two, for example, although the children sit the assessments in year six, they're not about assessments in year six, they're about assessments of everything children have learnt all the way through their primary education. And equally, what children achieve at the end of key stage four is not about what they've learnt in years 10 and 11, it's about what they've learnt all the way through, as well as the curriculum review, which Derry referred to. We've also got the review of the Ofsted framework at the moment, and that's looking at, at all the areas for all schools. So I think it's, it's a time of change.
Again.
Councillor Spicer, I believe you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just trying to get performance figures. I, I'm not learning an awful lot from paragraph 48, Chairman, over, there's a little bit about direction of travel and a little bit about comparisons with national things. So I got kind of more interested in the next section, which was G, about our statistical neighbours. Well, they're not really neighbours, are they, if they're Cornwall? But that's, that's the language. And we have this relationship, which is going to change, with Norfolk, for example. We're engaged, we might have to get married and share a mare. But what fascinated me then, and I'm going to pick this just as an example, if you look at the key stage two outcomes, which are paragraph 56, there's Norfolk languishing down the bottom. But we move on to key stage four over the page, and hey, Norfolk are doing better than us suddenly, which makes me wonder why? What's going on that Norfolk suddenly catch up and do better? Is there something to? It's just a silly question, really, but one which, sitting as I, my county council walled it on the Norfolk border. And interestingly, I've had conversations with colleagues, parish councils and things recently, and two of, one, two of my primary schools right on the border have benefited from Norfolk children coming in. One still does, and one is not getting any from Norfolk anymore, which is interesting.
So if I start, in terms of statistical neighbours, our statistical neighbours changed last week? So we have a new set of statistical neighbours, and I don't believe Cornwall is one of our statistical neighbours anymore.
We've lost Cornwall.
But we've kept Norfolk. We have a different set of statistical neighbours, so we will be working with those neighbours. You referred also to the table about key stage four. I should just point out a mistake in the title of the table and in paragraph 57, where it says English and Maths five plus, that should say four plus. So the data is, is different on those tables. The data is still accurate, it's just the heading, it should say English and Maths four plus. We're keen to learn from all of our statistical neighbours. In fact, we're keen to learn from any local authority where we can see practice that would be helpful for us to learn from. So over the last few years, for example, Mark and Emma and I have visited East Sussex, because East Sussex was an authority that was achieving better than Suffolk a couple of years ago. We visited Hertfordshire, where their percentage of schools judged good or better was greater than Suffolk's and was improving at a greater rate than Suffolk's. It was one of the few, few local authorities that was improving at a greater rate than Suffolk, and we'll be learning from our new statistical neighbours as well. Andrew referred earlier to the work with the RISE team, including the conferences next month with Norfolk too. So there'll be practice to share from Norfolk with Suffolk and from Suffolk with Norfolk, and also areas for us to focus on together where we've got shared work we need to do.
One quick follow-up. With the statistical neighbours, have they got approximately the same proportions of schools that have moved to academy status as us, more or less? Because we haven't got data today, and I imagine there's good reasons to separate our own academy attainment outcomes from local authority schools. But are the neighbours a similar makeup?
Yes. Yeah, would be the very, would be very, the quick answer, but we, we meet up with our statistical neighbours, and although that's not one of the criteria for them, the criteria is around the geography, we find a lot of our statistical neighbours are coastal, large shires, the same kind of infrastructure that we have, the great distances to travel, a large number of small rural schools. And when we talk to them, we, we share our kind of data and figures, they are almost exactly the same in most cases, the percentages of academies at primary level and then the second, percentage which is much higher at, at secondary level, yeah. And although we've, we've had a change of about five or six, or half of our statistical neighbours have changed, I couldn't say for certain the new group, but I wouldn't be surprised, I, I would expect it to remain, so. But we can come back to you that when we've had a chance to, to gather that group together and let you know.
Thank you. I think Peter Byatt had the next question?
Thank you. First of all, Chair, I should have declared an interest earlier on, as a retired teacher and current paid-up member of the National Education Union, I have that interest. And following on from what Joe said, I think we have got to remember that if we don't take the teachers with us, none of this will work. And I wasn't, that's not me being cynical, I think it's a whole job to be done. I think it's important we congratulate our schools on improving the achievements. We do know that key stage four has always been a little bit Cinderella-y, and there have always been problems. But just being very specific to Lowestoft, thank you, Sarah Jane, for saying, you know, there's going to be a focus there, I'm not sure if it's got to you yet, but East Suffolk are now taking the Lowestoft Rising Project further now, and it's going to be the Marmot Project, taking the best of all of those. But I think the problem is, we know very well that as, as you mentioned, we've got areas in Ipswich which are deprived, but we have significant pockets, quite large pockets, in North Suffolk anyway, and I think the fact that you're going to be focusing up there is really important. And I think we shouldn't ignore the past. Way back when I started teaching as a, for East Suffolk County Council, as it was then, it was a fascinating time where Lowestoft was its own education office, and seeing things coming along and all sorts of initiatives. And I remember one, not far into my teaching career, called Those Bearing Torches, and it was celebrating the brilliance of Suffolk as it was then. And we still have brilliance here in terms of what we offer, and of course, those who those who might remember it as well, No Schools in Ireland, where we sadly, I would say, saw the demise of the middle schools, which I thought were a great period in which you could have the gap for puberty to take place. However, that's just wishful thinking. But I think, you know, the problem is, I will be very parochial, we know very well that poor attainment at key stage four leads directly into needs. And that, I think, is something we really do need to really grab hold of, because the issues there do not disappear. And we have generational needs in parts of this county. So any help for Lowestoft specifically, I certainly welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Camilla?
Yes, I've got two questions, if that's okay. So firstly, having read a little bit into statistical neighbours and what sort of criteria that is judged on, as a parent governor representative here today, I'd like to know if internally at least, you measure against best performing in the country as well? Because I completely understand that it might not be realistic, but we talked earlier about aspirational approaches. And I'd like to know if at least internally, you do look aspirationally at what the best performing areas of the country are doing as well? That's part one.
Thank you. Yes, I'll respond to that to start with. Yes, we do. And although the statistical neighbour information is helpful, and it was one of the questions that the committee asked about, we look at national, and it's not because we want to be at national, we want to be above national. And we want to be above national for all Suffolk children. I think the point was raised earlier about the danger of an average, because it masks the range within it. So we, our mission, our vision, is that we're working with school leaders so that every Suffolk child achieves the very best they can achieve. So we need to be able to look at the data from whole sector level, all the way through to individual maths, individual schools, individual children, individual classes. Because within that total, there are 100,000 children. So yeah, absolutely, the aspiration is there to be above national, not just in line with statistical names.
Thank you. And part two, so a little bit of context to this. My son is in year seven and has had eight teachers this year across English, Maths and Science. Key stage four is always prioritised for staffing in secondary schools. I'd like to know if Suffolk are part of the national dialogue around teacher recruitment and retention, because that is a real key challenge in secondary that is clearly feeding into these figures.
Thank you. Again, I'll start with that one. Yes, absolutely. And again, on this roundtable yesterday, with the eastern region recruitment and retention was something which was raised. At the moment, it isn't a specific strand of work through the Suffolk Education Partnership, but I think it does underpin a lot of our work. And it also links with the previous question about sharing the successes and celebration. So that actually, one of the phrases we've been using with school leaders is about Suffolk being a great place to teach, lead and learn. And the more we get that out there about this is a great place to be a teacher and to be a leader, there's a lot of great things going on, and together we can do even more, the more we can welcome more colleagues into the profession. I don't know if any of my colleagues want to add to that, too?
I'll just add in that there has been obviously nationally huge problems with teacher recruitment. The national figures are moving in the right direction, so there has been some positive recently.
Thank you very much. And next we have Penny Otten.
Previously, when the Education scrutiny have looked at this, we've had the data broken down much further, perhaps to gender or ethnicity, to actually be able to see whether there were blockages within particular poverty areas, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just wondering if there are any way, or are you able to access that sort of data to be able to hone in any areas where, for example, there may be a lack of interpreters or, you know, specialist help?
Yes, councillor Otten, short answer, yes. We're able to analyse the data in terms of all sorts of groups, regions, localities, because it's based on individual schools and individual children. We can analyse it in incredible amount of detail. It's then working with the school leaders to say, what does this mean for your school that then makes the difference?
Yeah, just to add to that, we also, I think it was mentioned earlier, but we provide something called School Improvement Summary Sheets for all schools, elementary maintained and academies, based on their data, so based on the published data. But it also gives a local authority overview and a national picture. And that breaks down far more than actually you get on the Compare Schools League table. So that has those breakdowns by ethnicity, by gender and other characteristics in there as well. So not only do we have it and look at it, but we also share that with the school leaders to look at.
Thank you. Go on.
I suppose with the benefit of Derry with us, I just wonder if we could delve into the key stage four question a little more. I'm really interested in the barriers to higher attainment at key stage four from your experience, and what's proved most effective in countering those and addressing those barriers?
Who would like that one?
Okay, so barriers to key stage four attainment. So I think the improvement in primary school data, as you can see, is really positive. When I, but this is just an anecdote, just entirely about my school. When I arrived, there was an underperforming primary school that was feeding into the school. And the head teacher said to me, you've had five years of, your school has got five years of inadequately taught children in it. So one of the things that councillors, I'm sure are aware, is the lag in terms of school improvement. It's a complex and a long journey in terms of system improvement of a system. And where there has been weaker performance in the past, that then will be feeding through all the way through the system. So that's one factor. Other factors, we do have quite high mobility of families in Suffolk. There's quite a lot of mobility between some of the schools. And the reasons for that are interesting, but there's a lot of families that move into one school, then out of that school, into another school. And moving around the schools, that happens. And that's families sometimes driving that themselves. I think we're seeing struggling families. We're seeing some parents, a small minority, but some parents really struggling to set boundaries for their children. That is a big challenge for us. I think the external influences that are affecting young people have been more extreme than ever before. So for the mobile phone is a very, one example of that. I think there's a national conversation in education and parenting that's really waking up to the harm that that's causing education. We've talked about SEND and some of the challenges. That's been very, very significant. We've talked about the importance of transition. I think it's fair to recognise that the children in the data of the last couple of years are precisely the children that didn't have that transition in Covid. So I think head teachers are saying the current cohort have been the ones that are most damaged through the Covid experience. And what you're seeing is that that's now coming through the system. So in terms of what works, really strong relationships, building strong relationships with families, working around literacy, helping children that are way behind in their literacy, trying to catch up. We've, there are large cohorts of children with huge gaps, that we're trying to then accelerate their progress then and catch up in secondary schools in a way that we haven't had to do so before. Obviously, continuity, focus on staffing, prioritising the retention of teaching staff, that is absolutely crucial. Schools improve when they have stability in staffing, when they have stability as of teachers. So that is a top priority for what works in our setting. So there's some of the, obviously, upskilling teachers, working hard in terms of hederegogy, developing curriculum, assessment, best practice around those. These are all things that are nuts and bolts, but critical to get right.
Really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Spicer, I believe you have a question?
Yes. I'm sorry I missed the session where we phoned the questions, because I would have asked again if we could have had the performance data off the performance dashboard. And colleagues here may know, the Audit Committee reviews twice a year how performance is presented in the organisation. And I've had my usual struggle through various websites to actually arrive at the corporate dashboard, but I have, hence here. And what I'm interested to see is, at key stage two and at key stage four, the indicators that we use, I won't get into all the detail, because my question is, in the column called target, we say no target. Now, I'm sure there's not a national target, but has there ever been consideration, either at officer or political level, that we might set ourselves from targets for improvement around attainment? There's three attainment indicators, actually. And please, can we always have performance data for scrutiny committees? Because it's so difficult to find otherwise. So my question is all about targets, really. I don't know, Sarah Jane, I put you on the spot.
Thank you, Councillor Spicer. I'm just trying to locate, I think what you're talking about is the corporate dashboard. I don't think it's been so... I'm just trying to look at it at great speed, so I quite agree with you.
I'm deliberately not focusing on what the, the three, there are three levels about achievement, but don't worry what they are. The point is, none of them have targets. And my question is, or do, should we, I mean, there's mixed views about targets, but it looks rather weak to say no target. There should be a target called Get Better, Improve, even if it's not a numerical target.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councillor Spicer. I'm just going to pass to Julia, who'll be able to give a much better answer than me regarding the targets. No, and I'm still looking for it.
Thank you. Yeah, I think in the past, we have had targets, and sometimes those targets then become difficult when the national system of the assessments changes, and the target that was set at one time then isn't relevant. I think the important point is, when we're working together in our partnership, we know what success will look like, and I equate that to the target. So when we are successful working together around attainment, what will it look like in 2025? What will it look like in 2026? And what will it look like further beyond? And that we have intelligent targets that enable us to see that we are having the right impact that we need. So it could be at top level, or it could be specific groups. But those targets need to be worked on together so that everybody who works in the system, thinking about the conversations we've had about CEOs, head teachers, teachers, we all recognise that they're targets for all of us. They're not targets that are set by one part of that partnership.
Thank you. Happy with that?
Yes, it's a useful explanation. Is there some way we can, instead of saying no target, we can specify that we wish to see improvement? Even if we don't item, put a number to it?
I think we're still trying to find the report. Can we come back to this? Would that be all right?
Come back after I make... Yeah, come back after I make...
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much for that. Do we have any more questions on the report? Ashley?
Hi, everyone. Yeah, sorry, I've been keeping quiet. Everyone's been answering my questions before I got a chance to do them, I think. But I think I just wanted to come back and make a bit more in on what councillor Reader was saying around the, about key stage three and that transition, because obviously we're very aware that that is a challenging area for young people across the board for all sorts of variety of reasons. And we can see nationally and locally, and statistical neighbours is obviously having that sort of impact. So I just wanted, I think, taking that and also the links we've had in our pack around to the, about the Education Endowment Foundation and the attainment gap within that, you know, between, I think, I can't remember the exact term, but I'll use this one, please correct me if I've got this wrong, insensitively said, but between advantaged and disadvantaged groups. I don't know if that is the correct term. You're nodding, so hopefully that's okay. And that gap, the data in there that we had a link to was from 2016, 2017, but I did a bit more delving into there, and there was another article around saying that that gap's increased, possibly and probably due to the pandemic and beyond. Now, if that attainment gap there is increasing, obviously that's going to affect attainment across the board. So if we can close that attainment gap there, that's going to improve attainment for everyone nationally, the whole picture. And I know we touched on like urban deprivation, I will get to a question that's on final progress, urban deprivation, and then obviously we've got that unique, more unique area about rural deprivation, which can, I saw that was about small schools network, which I presume feeds into that. So what, I mean, I think basically my question around this is, do we have any more kind of newer data on that attainment gap in Suffolk? And, you know, is it unfortunately growing like the reports nationally seem to imply? And then what are we trying to do to kind of as a, as a local authority and also as Academy Trust to really kind of try and combat that? Because I can appreciate if there's more disadvantaged young people struggling with all sorts of other things within their lives, then obviously I presume then the pastoral element of school becomes such a priority that then, you know, you're spending so much time on that, that then obviously trying to get the attainment is maybe a second priority. You can tell me how you deal with this. But so it's just kind of a little bit more kind of expansion really around like how we're all working to kind of really try and close that gap, which I think will then obviously reflect in a positive outcome for everyone. Sorry for the long windiness of that, but hopefully we can go.
Shall I come in first, councillor? So thank you for your question, and thank you for raising the importance of rural deprivation as well as urban deprivation. There are pockets of rural deprivation, which by your question, you show you are aware of, and the make-up of schools can be significantly affected by that. You are also correct in terms of the amount of pastoral support we tend to have to use for those pupils. In terms of what we do, I can talk about what we do in Armatt, we ensure that those pupils have access and opportunities similar to pupils from, who do not have that deprivation. So if I can use one particular example, writing is always a really important skill, but to some extent, writing depends upon your experiences. Therefore, if you are not providing those experiences as a school before doing the writing, it's going to prejudice particular pupils. So if you ask children to write a story about what they did at the weekend, you know, not that we would ever do that these days, but if you do, you're automatically bringing prejudice in. So we ensure before our writing tasks, there is a learning opportunity that could be an educational visit, could be a trip to the woods, but all pupils are involved in that first. So what we try and do is to ensure that the pupils have the equal experience to start off with before being asked to do the work. So that's just one example of how we try and do that. But you're absolutely right in terms of the deprivation. If we focus on reducing that disadvantaged attainment gap, that is going to increase the attainment figures overall. In terms of your first question, which was about where are we, obviously, our key stage two results are not released until early July. Derry, I'm sure will speak about the exam system, but we have close monitoring of what we're doing in schools, but you never actually know what the data is going to say when you get it.
Thank you. We also have analysis of outcomes. We also have analysis of outcomes by groups. And looking at that, what that tells us across Suffolk is that the gap for disadvantaged children in the measures around phonics at Key Stage Two and for maths grade five at Key Stage Four, those gaps have been closing over the last three years. For other measures, including at Key Stage Four, attainment eight, progress eight, English grade five, English and maths grade five, those gaps have slightly widened by 0.1-ish percent. And the gap for English and maths combined grade four plus has very slightly narrowed as well. As I think Andrew and Derry referred to also, we're going to be using the 2025 outcomes to have a look at what that gap looks like at the moment. I wondered if I could just also add to the previous question about targets again, just to reinforce that absolutely it is important that we will have measurable intended outcomes, targets, what the difference will be when we're successful, and that we work on those as a partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more questions on the report? Right up to the end? No? Okay, that's fine. Well, I thank everybody. Can we, would you like to sum up, Andrew?
Well, thank you, thank you very much indeed for allowing us to come and speak to you, and we very much appreciate it. And if there are any other issues that come out of your, your discussion, subsequent discussions, we'd be, you know, happy to respond to those. Thank you.
Okay.
And so may I add my thanks to all our guests as well for your active and positive contributions. Thank you.
It's good that they've been very involved. It's been a pleasure. Thank you. In fact, everybody's been very involved, particularly Julia. So thank you very much. So... A very short break. Recommendations. Can I have ideas from the committee on recommendations, please? Well, let's take the last issue that was discussed around targets. And I realise we should have perhaps pressed Julia, oh, good, Sarah Jane's still here, as to whether we can make any recommendation about target, I hate that word target, actually, around ambition. But if you look at other services on the Performance Dashboard, that there are, you can do things like with little arrows and things to show that you at least want to improve, but using the expression no target sounds like you don't care if it gets better. So could we ask for some further work to be done as to how performance, changes in performance can be demonstrated to be more ambitious? You want to signal our aspirations, really? I'm sure other people can help get the wording right.
The chart that we have, where the list of counties which we're in, Norfolk, Suffolk, Gloucestershire, blah, 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 I'm assuming those have been chosen for their comparison to Suffolk, either geographically, environmentally, blah, blah, whatever. I mean, obviously, we're not then seeing those local authorities that are the top of the, the top of the tree, aren't we? So, I mean, is there any relevance in actually seeing which is the top local authority, if you like? And what are they, you know, what are their comparisons? I mean, we all used to say about London, because London got so much money. So I don't know. I mean, you know, what can we compare it with? If we're still seem to be in, with a group of local authorities that are roughly about the same level? Do you see what I'm saying?
No, I don't understand what you're saying, but as long as everybody else does.
No, Chair, I'm, you know, I agree, it's, and...
Where'd you get that from?
Well, that's F40, that's where we are in the funding. I mean, yes. I mean, like in paragraph 72, where we are the 113th lowest authority out of 151, really a very interesting set of data would be those that say are at 55 in the most funded counties and what their attainment level is. Because is it all about funding? Yeah. And therefore, just developing Penny's point is, let's have some comparators of other authorities that, I don't know, they could be, they could get more money and see what their actual figures are, because we're only comparing those two to ones that are statistical neighbours. What do, what should we be aiming for? What is a good performing authority, you know? Yeah. Are they achieving 90%? Are they achieving? I know this.
Finances for, you know, we're, we're saying 2024, Gloucestershire is 72, Suffolk is 63. So who would, we would like to know who is 95 or...
Okay, do you have a comment to make on that?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councillors and members, for your question. So the statistical neighbours are based on places which are similar to us. So all of the things that you outlined, they would have similar funding, similar population geography. So it's comparing more like for like than we would if we were to compare ourselves to Islington, for example. There are not many similarities. What we can bring forward is best practice. So that, I think that's what you're asking me, is where, where do we know who does this really well? So Julia and her team are plugged into nationally groups around what, what best practice looks like. I think that would be really interesting to look at and then to think about what is that? Is it an approach? Is it, it won't all be about money, but it will be about supporting those. I would, I would be fairly confident to say that those authorities who are performing much better are probably authorities who have a much fairer funding than we do. But we can absolutely bring best practice examples. And this little group of statistical neighbours have changed as well, so Julia will bring that information back as well.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I think we get very data-driven and data-bound. I mean, I would like to see a 10-year view, because we know that all initiatives, no matter what government, a bunch of bright sparks have come in with something, it takes, it's like a super-tanker, you know, five years is, is nothing when you look at the development and it's, you know, and each child's development. So whether we could look at, you know, go back five years, go back 10 years, and see what other factors have come in, even go back and look at when the National Curriculum came in, God help us, you know, that, that was a fascinating time. I still got my 10 A4 folders of how it had to be. And speaking as a teacher, when that came in, the proscription, proscription that we feared was unbelievable. Fortunately, we tweaked it, but maybe that's what went wrong. But, you know, in all seriousness, we can bring initiatives forward, but unless they can be sold on, on the fact that they are really going to make a difference, we can keep chipping away at this, we, you know, 10 years' time, we could still be looking at pockets of deprivation. We've got to be, also, I was speaking to Joe earlier about this, part of the problem is what are we, it's, you get to, primary children are relatively easy to manipulate, and I don't mean that in a cynical way, that they will go to school willingly. It's whether you get to the Key Stage Four and beyond like that, it's persuading the, the Key Stage Four pupils, you know, what's their reason for being there? Why are they going to school? What's the purpose? It's always been that. Why are you here? What's your, what's your future going to be? So we've got lots of prospects here, and it's tying in. So we've got lots of prospects here and it's tying in with developments. It's tying in with infrastructure projects and so on. And I know it already happens, but making sure that kids in schools, teenagers, can see an end in sight if they actually go down a certain route, whether it's academic or not. But I think, you know, it would be awful to be sitting here in five or 10 years' time still seeing us, you know, wallowing around saying, oh, we've still got these people who are generationally neat, don't want to do anything. So please, can we look at the longer period as well? Thank you.
Try and polish this into, yeah, into a recommendation. Anything else?
Yes, obviously, this, what appears to be a very thorny subject, and understandably, the difference between academies and local authority schools. It says in the narrative, but it isn't teased out in the data. And once again, I think that isn't about looking for criticism. It's just looking at seeing where what works well and what perhaps doesn't, and how we can address that. And I totally agree with all the partnership working, it's got to be about that. But if we can see, for whatever reason, particular schools or groups of schools are doing better than others, then that enables officers to look at what they're doing and then transfer it across, which I know you're going to, you know, we do anyhow. But I just think if we can see it in some format, it just reinforces it perhaps. So Helen, can you get a recommendation out of that? Yeah, of course you can.
Okay, excuse me, Joe has had his hand up for a bit.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, one just very general observation, which might be able to be written as a recommendation, is to congratulate the officers with what is clearly good partnership work and practices with LA schools and academy chains. I thought that came through quite strongly through the scrutiny. And I think it's an important thing that should be maintained and carried on going forward. Which is quite general, just quite nice and supportive of the work that the officers are doing. The other, the other thing that I was thinking about was the notion of impact. And whether more thought can be given into how we can demonstrate impact on some of the schemes that we are, or projects that we are doing with schools or the academy chains. It's all very well talking about we want more money, but are we spending that money wisely? Is it actually impacting on raising attainment? So a good example would be the Get Suffolk Reading scheme. Where is the evidence base to say, actually, this is the, these are the outcomes of this particular scheme? And I think it would be quite interesting for projects that are maybe initiated by Suffolk County Council that we begin to see a little bit more of an evidence basis, rather than just hearing about them taking place. And without doubt, Get Suffolk Reading is a worthy scheme, that's beyond question. But there's no real metrics to understand how successful it has been. Does that make...
You note that. Okay, Joanna, sorry.
I, first of all, can I also sign up to any form of recommendation that Joe's just proposed around congratulating or commending officers over what is an incredibly difficult landscape? I think we've, you know, reinforced again this morning that it isn't even just local authority schools and academy schools. The variations on the academy schools make it even more complicated. And I couldn't help thinking during the meeting, thank heavens we weren't having middle schools in the mess, in the muddle of all of that, and the middle schools in the middle of all of that conversation. I still come under attack, well, say, yes, people, and I had it the other day. You closed our middle school, you should know, you know. I had two middle schools in my ward. So the scars are there, I can tell you. Anyway, what I want to talk about is information for county councillors. And if we were coming up to elections, this would be a very strong recommendation. But could we ask that attainment information is made more appropriately available to all county councillors? If you'd asked me to find how any of the schools in my ward did, I'd have to go onto national websites, I think, to find that. And whether, I don't know if Sarah Jane can help me on this, but I feel, I'm not given anything by the county council, by the local authority, about attainment in my schools. And I think I should be able to have access to that information. Does anybody, am I going over the top? Yes, yes. Okay, so that's something there, and I don't know if Sarah Jane can make it a bit easier. Recognising where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councillor Spicer. I think, just listening to you, and I'm sorry Julia's not here, because she could tell me wherever I'm on the right track. My head says that there should be ward member briefings. So we should brief per ward as to who your schools are, where your children's homes are, all of those things. So if that's something that we're not doing, we're absolutely unhappy to take that recommendation and we'll be able to start that conversation with individuals.
I think it only happens currently by exception. I mean, I've had a briefing from Julia on a couple of school issues, but I'm not routinely being told how schools, as I say, I've still got quite a lot of schools.
Peter?
Just very briefly, in my induction pack, when I was returned to this great establishment last year, some of that information was in there, but actually making it quite clear to councillors... No, it was just general, but I think delving down into it, that'd be really useful. It was just something I would like to ask, I was just going to ask earlier. This thing about regular visits to all LA-maintained schools and to academies. The offer isn't always taken up. Can we find out what, you know, how to bring more of those schools into the fold? Who then want to have regular monitoring from the local authorities? Is that a possibility? I mean, is that, I think you talked about 75% of schools are covered, but that still means that a quarter of our schools are not really engaging with the monitoring process with the authority? Or does that mean we're seeing it too simplistically?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the question. I think this is where we need to look at the complexity of this relationship, because it's not like the local authority, educational authority as was. Our position is very much to influence the academies and to build relationships and to make that offer. And if they choose not to take that offer, that's fine. And we have to know that that's fine, because, you know, well, but it's okay. Because, you know, that's the conversation and the Suffolk Education Partnership will continue. So we continue going back and we continue. That wouldn't mean that we wouldn't speak to them or, you know, continue to offer. But we need to know that that's okay for them to do that. As a local authority, the scrutiny that you should give to us is that we do keep going back and we keep in the relationship. That's what we're asked to do. Yeah, most definitely. We still absolutely, you know, all of our Suffolk children are Suffolk children, in whatever setting they're in. And our responsibility as the local authority is to keep making sure we maintain those relationships. And then those schools and settings can take up our offer or not take up our offer. We just need to continue to be talking to them.
Just to follow in on that, I think I was going to say, we often talk about in these scrutiny meetings about kind of hard-to-reach young people. And almost in this sense, we talk about hard-to-reach organisations. And I think we just need to, like you say, keep that, keep that conversation up at all times on that, yeah.
Sarah Jane? Is there any recommendations you think we could make that would help your cause?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's a really helpful question and thank you for the question. I was just talking to Hayley, actually, about our Families First programme. And you heard, you hear me talk about how we are changing our shape in children's services to wrap around schools and we're piloting that in the Lowestoft area. I can't bring it to mind, but I know we're going to talk to you about that pilot later on in the year and our Families First programme. Just to hear in talking about attainment, but particularly attendance came up a few times today. That is a shared initiative between our schools, families, everybody, to get that as right as possible. And that's something that definitely will come up through the Families First. So would really, you know, encourage a question around attendance in that space as well. I know I flipped from attainment to attendance, but, you know, aspiration is so important, children to be in that space. Yeah, thank you.
Ashley?
Yeah, just, I think it kind of ties into that nicely, just something else I just wanted to say around, because obviously we talked, talking about attainment, but it's such a small, and it's an important point, because it's a bit of data that we get and we can measure schools against each other or areas against each other and stuff. But I mean, obviously, it's such a small part of a kind of young person's journey through life, is that attainment figure. But like, it does impact going forward, as we're saying about like the longstanding needs in certain areas. So I think just something more about around that transition and that whole kind of wider package of support that we give to young people as they move from primary school into our secondary setting. Because we can, you know, obviously, schools do a lot of work in that, but I think we as a local authority can impact in that as well really well. Attendance is part of it, working with disadvantaged groups is obviously a really significant part of it. And just really trying to kind of ease that load that people have in such a way that that then is reflected, hopefully, in more positive attainment, more positive experiences in school, which lead to better attainment on the whole. So I think something around that would be great.
Okay, thank you. James?
Chair, could I just build on what Sarah Jane was saying? Because obviously Peter and I, and yourself, are from that neck of the woods. And we're really, really excited about it. Could part of the recommendation being is that you include local members to be part of that in whatever way they can be? And have a briefing so that we can support it, drive it, encourage the schools that we are part of? Because I think it's what we should be doing.
Just to have a thing of, a point of information. Thurston Community College went through a bit of a time, you know, particularly when getting rid of the middle schools, et cetera, et cetera. They actually have a regular, what they call, community liaison group. And they actually do invite myself, the district, the parish councils, the local community groups, the police, et cetera, et cetera. So, and that really, really is a good way in which we manage to sometimes dig out some of the kind of underlying problems with some pupils who may be, I mean, this was, this is a high school, so not a primary school. But I think it's a really good way for schools to actually have a bit more of a relationship with their communities. Because they know where the problems are.
So basically, the community groups to be encouraged, is the recommendation. Okay, anybody else? Because it's fine. Have you got enough to work with, Helen?
I think so.
Do you want, do you want more?
Because it says, sixth form provision two, two academies. I draw the line, where is Thurston in there? Yeah. And are there any other local authority? Sixth form?
The officers are going to share that information after the meeting. Is that correct? It's been checked up and that will be shared. Thank you. So if everybody's happy with...
Just raise this now, it's not a record. When I looked at those figures, I did email you back, Helen. Because how many of the schools stop at year 11, i.e. 16? Could you get that information and send it to us?
Yeah, I think that's in hand. That is in hand, yeah. Thank you. Okay then, so we've got a basis there, we'll take them away and polish them. Helen will have a nervous breakdown. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you down there, Joe.
That's okay. I might be off topic, so just tell me if it is. One thing about attainment is, of course, students attain at all different levels. You know, thinking about what happens after they get their GCSEs. Is there any information that can be provided that, about the range of pathways for students at all different levels? Are we, as a county, successfully promoting apprenticeships, encouraging businesses to take on more apprentices? Is there more information to be given to ensure that even those with lower attainment, that there are pathways that they can successfully move on to? Is that out of scope?
I think it's slightly outside the remit, but it's a good question. So perhaps we can look at that, bring it in on another meeting, I think, on that one. It's worth while storing and bringing along. Sorry, Sarah Jane?
Thank you, Chair, and would be really happy to share with all members exactly what you're talking about. We have a really good offer and a strong offer. And indeed, before, I think, full counselling in October, there's a careers fair here, which hopefully you can come along to, which displays all of that. But we can share that information and you can see whether that would be something you'd like to discuss further.
For that, and we will now move on to the information bulletins for nursing. Has everybody read them, happy with them? They can ask questions directly to the officer outside the meeting. Okay, no dissent there. We move on to gender right eight, the Forward Work Programme. Now, we've workshop this, as members of the day will know, and we've broken it down. We suggested that we combine children's online safety and safety in schools, substance misuse, trauma-informed practices, children's mental health, including emotional-based skill avoidance. Now, they all cross over, so we thought we'd take them as one, or we suggested we would take them as one big item. Bearing in mind, we get three, four scrutinies a year. So if we concentrate on them for one big item, which at the moment is unscheduled, that's a suggestion. We pencilled in a review of fostering and adoption on the 11th of September. And suggested the annual report from SEND Improvement Board Chair and update in progress of the Suffolk Local Area Priority Action Plan for December. Sorry?
Can we just be clear about the SEND Annual Report and Action Plan over, because I believe that's going to Cabinet as well? The annual report, is anybody able to help? I think we want to make sure we get the timings lined up.
We workshop this, we do discuss it with the officers, et cetera, et cetera. And we've looked at the timings of what we're recommending to make sure we can fit that in and that doesn't clash with what else is going on that would disrupt it. Okay.
Councillor Spicer, thank you for the question. Could I come back just to, because I don't know off the top of my head? But just as the Chair has said, that has all been checked, but it's a good point you raised. I'll just double-check to make sure.
So we, basically, this committee has got three left, so that would take care of two of them. The combined one, there is some variation in government regulation coming out in the next few months. So we weren't, we've got a couple of unscheduled items that we were looking at, but we weren't going to schedule them until we knew which direction the government was going into for March. We wanted to make sure that we had time to get it right. So update on net zero progress in Suffolk's public-funded skills. So update on net zero progress in Suffolk's public funded schools. We think we ought to take that off the Forward Work Programme. That's more certainly done by Cabinet or the Full Scrutiny Committee because of our limited time. And then a provisional item, because the leaving care offer in Suffolk. To consider the provisions in place for Suffolk's care leavers and the changes implemented following the 2024 ILAC inspection as a possibility for March. Has anybody got anything they'd like to say on that or any alternative provision or? James?
Could I just say that the suggestions that Helen put together was, looked really good to me? And we could perhaps adopt that part for this particular paper to replace...
Yes, I think it'd be good to adopt that one for the Forward Work Programme. Otherwise, we get a length of about five years' meetings. Okay. Is everybody happy with that? Well, that's what we'll go with then. Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming. Especially the ones that you struggle through the traffic. It's much better by trying sometimes. Okay, well, thank you very much.